Corrected, and I'll make a motion that we approve. And it's on the June 21st, 2001 Select Board Meeting.
All right, I will second that motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll abstain because I was absent from that meeting.
Yes. All right, all in favor? Passes two oh with one extension. Normally, we do old business before new business, so despite it being otherwise on here, we're ritual business, which is Jeff and Christina Woodman. Ash Point Farms follow up?
Coming right up.
Yeah.
Christina Woodman. I am here because of your last meeting. You reviewed our proposed language for ordinance amendment to allow events on properties over fifteen acres in the agricultural district. And you indicated that you intended this amendment to go in front of the voters at the August held meeting. We spoke with Scott Pickford during the following, during and following that meeting, and it was agreed that the required hearing could be held during the planning board's regular July 12th meeting to make sure that the language would be ready in time for the board's deadline, August 2nd, to get a warrant finalized for the annual report. Despite providing the materials Scott had requested, including the hearing notice, we later received from, we received word from the planning board chair that the board had decided that it would not allow a hearing on the 12th. The chair posed this as a major overhaul of the zoning ordinance that he seems to think will require notice to the whole town and extensive lengthy study. In reality, the town allowed commercial business of our property, including retail sales in a commercial kitchen for over fifteen years before we took ownership. So this is not a groundbreaking change. Our attorney confirmed with Fred Newcomb that the town-wide notice, or even notice to our butters, is not required. Though not required to, we certainly wouldn't object to providing notice to our neighbors. We recently held a school prom on our property, and has, and we've received nothing but praise from our neighbors and the broader community. The planning board chairs, the planning board's chair suggested that our proposed event use had been rejected by the zoning board of appeals. In fact, the board of appeals simply suggested that we seek ordinance amendments to allow our proposed use, just like our predecessor had. This is all that we are trying to do. And very much understand that it is up to the voters and not to any town board whether to allow it. We ask that you inform the planning board that the select board will be putting on the warrant, whatever is the current version of the ordinance, on August 2nd. The planning board's job is to simply hold one hearing on the amendment and to make any recommendations to the selectmen it feels necessary. It is not the planning board's job to exhaustively review and revise the amendment until it is 100% satisfied. Again, the goal is to get the concept to the largest number of voters and let them decide. We hope that you will enforce the schedule and let that happen.
There's still time to have, I think it's next Wednesday, planning board meeting.
Sure.
Right, and then there's still time to have a public hearing between, whatever the date is, next week and August.
The planning board meets on the 12th.
Right, so that's next Wednesday.
Monday night, it's now.
Monday night, excuse me, they used to meet on Wednesday, okay. Monday night, there's still time to have a public hearing.
Sure.
So I don't see what the big deal is. We don't have to advertise on the courier because there is a time, you know, with time constraints. You have to get in on Monday for the Thursday edition. It has to be in twice, one of, we can advertise in the bank or prepress.
Right.
It gets posted anyway. We don't, we're not restricted to the courier because that. So, and it can be online, and the online version of the courier too, so. There's plenty of time, so I don't see why there should be any stalling at this point.
The reason why it was canceled that very first time is because it was online, but Fred said that it had to be in the actual paper on Thursday, so that, that wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to do it online.
It has to be a printed edition. And there's, the time frame, you say, like ten days or whatever it is.
Yeah, I was told that we missed it by one day because of holiday.
Right, right, but there's still plenty of time to get, to get that in and have it, you know, for the August 20th, 30th town meeting.
Right. But leading up to, I don't want to come back here and have another issue and say, well, the wording wasn't correct, or we used et cetera, or it's something else. I mean, I'm missing a Socrates right now. I just, I, I want it to go before the town vote. It was appealed, and when, by the two that it was appealed to, they said, bring it to a town vote. And that's what we're trying to do. And every time we try, it just is something else, and then it's something else, and then it's something else. And we've done everything. We've surrendered ourselves.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, it is up to the planning board to call that special meeting. It's not up to?
Public hearing.
A public hearing. It's not up to the select board?
Right.
That's my understanding as well. And my understanding is they didn't want to do that until they made their final decision. So if they make their final decision on the 12th?
Sure.
Then they should be able to schedule a hearing at that time. I guess, Eleanor, you should let them know that the select board would like the special hearing held after the, after the meeting of the 12th.
Right, I, I think it's special hearing, the public hearing. There can be changes suggested, you know, in that hearing.
Irregardless of anything, just irregardless you want.
Well, I, I don't want them to, to just delay and not vote on it just so it doesn't get on the town meeting agenda. I don't think that would be fair.
So, and it's probably what's going to happen, so I need to know if you really want them to actually just set it up and discuss.
Well, some of the planning board.
What are they?
Meeting. The final, the final.
The final one that Kristen brought in.
Yeah, there was some changes.
So we changed it from 11:00 PM to 10:00 PM, but allowing the vendors to be able to pick up, should it be 10:10. I go to bed early too. So, and I would obviously be following the town noise ordinance, which is 10 o'clock.
Right.
So I mean, I don't know that we can force them to make a decision on the 12th, but we can clearly indicate that we would like them to.
Or just a hearing.
The, the public hearing.
And then have, have a public hearing afterwards.
That would be, thank you.
You know, the, the public hearing doesn't have to be on the 12th, I'm not saying that.
Right, right.
Right, well, it can't be now. It's too late to get everything done. It's only, it's only a agenda for 12th. They should schedule a public hearing.
Because basically, one way or another, we'd like to get it over with by the end of August.
Right.
And if the planning board continues to resist scheduling such a meeting, the Woodmans recourse would be a citizen's petition to put it on the warrant, is that correct?
Well, I think you still probably have to have a public hearing. I'm not sure that's a legal question. If they could just have a petition with the amount of people necessary to put it on the warrant, I'm not sure that that's, at that point, that would require a public hearing.
Also, I don't think they would need the petition if we, the board, decided to put it on the warrant. It would only be if we decide not to put it on the warrant that they would go to petition.
Awesome. Then there still might have to be a public hearing. That's a legal question.
Yeah, well, so bounce that off of our attorney to, to see if the public hearing can be held without the planning board's input, I guess, or zone boards.
There you go.
Okay.
That's it, okay, thank you.
Is there any discussion from the audience on that? Yes, ma'am?
The Woodmans have been trying to get this approved for almost a year now. And, you know, I'm an alternate on the planning board, so I don't have the ability to vote or anything like that or really participate in the discussions. I kind of listen. So, several years ago, I'm just going to draw an analogy here. There was a gentleman who lives across the road from the airport, who in the town meeting wanted to have his property zoned commercial from residential because he's been running, he'd been running a business on his property. You know, the boat guy, okay? That just happened like that. It was a vote, and it became commercial. So, going back to this effort now for a year, why is this so long and dragged out, et cetera, when somebody else had their property zoned commercial in the blink of an eye? Just based on, you know, a people's vote at the town meeting? That's all I have to say.
Yeah, well, you just would probably ask the planning board that, that would be the difference.
Yeah, well, it's a town meeting.
It's really, really, not up to us. You know, we're happy to put it on the warrant, but we got to make sure that hearings help first, just to, because it's a zoning issue.
But what do they follow? They just, depends on how they feel? Do you have guidelines that they follow? If they approve them down here, which is right over here, the same distance as the farm is from here to there, they just, depends on how they feel that day? Or is there like restrictions, guidelines?
Theoretically, theoretically, they're following our ordinances, et cetera.
Okay, so who do I ask? What ordinances they follow down there?
I'd ask Russ Wolfert, the chairman of the planning board.
Yeah, the, the thing with that one down, he was, he was in violation. He was already doing it commercial. He was running this commercial. He wanted to sell it. He wanted to advertise this commercial. It wasn't, as it came, as it turned out, he never sold it, and he wasn't even putting it on the market. That's what sort of pushed it. Someone wanted to buy it, and they found out it really wasn't commercial, so they pushed it.
Can I add that the, the farm was listed for a year and seven months under commercial?
Yeah.
And I had a phone conversation with the chair stating that he had corrected the real estate agent that listed the boat place as commercial, and they corrected them and said that it was residential. But as I reminded him, that himself, as a broker, knew that the farm also was in residential, but it was listed commercial. And I have contacted Legacy to find out because it was suggested from the chair that I file a lawsuit against them.
Because they, they presented it as commercial.
Well, I would like to know. We're waiting to hear back. Why, the thing is, is it's commercial kitchen, and part of the property is commercial.
Yeah, well, they, they.
So.
They listed it as commercial.
Right.
It was used commercially, but it was illegal. It was illegal when the plus five was there too, because they were using it commercially.
Right.
Yes, sir.
It's unfortunate.
It's my understanding that.
Could you identify yourself for the recording?
You're welcome.
And would it be helpful? Thank you.
Kyle Woodman. It's my understanding that as a select person, you're elected. If you do something that the town doesn't particularly care for, you're voted out. I mean, that stands to reason. Is the planning board nominated or elected? And if nominated, who oversees a problem that a lot of people seem to have? Because I can come up with 100 people that thinks there's something a little awry here. And I hate to even bring that up, but since we're at a meeting, why not? You're elected, we can out you. But a planning board member or a zoning board of appeals member, I'm assuming, he used to be, appointed. Somebody has to be able to oversee people that abuse their power. I don't care if it's here in Owl's Head or the state or the federal government. And I think something, somebody ought to be looking into that.
Well, if I may, it's not a similar law. I went through this with the zone, with the cell tower, and the planning board was trying to help, you know, squash the whole thing and spend tons of money on attorneys and whatever. Come to find out, you know, they couldn't, they couldn't do what they thought they could do. But the planning board has to go by state rules and stuff, so, you know.
But ultimately.
He has to tie somewhat with that.
Yeah, but ultimately, we do appoint the planning board. I don't know. I'm not sure how, if a formal complaint needs to be made, or how, how we would go about that. It's never come up in my experience.
Right, and I do want to note too that as we closed, the comment from the chair was, how come we didn't look more into it? You know, when you run a commercial business and a listing that's listed commercial, you know, why would we check? We didn't think to challenge it because that's what it listed. And there was, there was a business in there with a gift shop selling more than just wine. It was selling apparel, it was selling all sorts of things. And I, I highly respect Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, and I feel horrible that their name from others are throwing them under the bus, telling, saying that they threw, they were holding an illegal business. You know, they're still taxpayers here in Owl's Head.
Richard Cameron. I believe that, to begin with, when the boat yacht down here was voted on to be a commercial law, that there was actually a public hearing by the planning board prior to that meeting. Also, as far as the winery goes, if you look into the wording in the ordinance which was passed for them, that they did not do anything illegal. It was things that could be done there, and because it was an agricultural business, it could sell certain things and so forth. And I think there was nothing illegal, nothing commercial about it, if meant it.
Right.
What the ordinance.
So I'm not stating that they were in an illegal business. I know three people who had, who are on the board.
Okay, I wish you wouldn't jump in on that.
Okay, sorry.
Anything else? Okay, all right. All right, so again, we, we just need the planning, the, the planning board to act on the 12th, one way or the other, and then to schedule a public hearing. Yes, Mr. Woodman?
You just made a statement, but you don't have the authority, from my understanding, what you've been talking about. You don't have the authority to make anybody do anything. Am I right about that? You're just requesting the zoning board to do what you would like to have them do.
Well.
Can you do, can you, under authority, get this thing taken care of? It's not been a year, it's been a year and a half.
Okay. If, if they refuse to do it, I suppose we could look at whether or not there needs to be replacements on the board.
Well, I think that's something down the line. I think we need to see if they are going to blow it off again, what, what can be done on our end to move this forward.
I think it's a question for MNA. Does the select board have authority to direct the planning board to take any action?
So anyway, first, we need to see if they will act on the 12th, and if they don't, and they don't schedule a public hearing, then we may have to do something else.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
All right, any other old business? Okay, new business. First item is the future of OHAC. I don't want to disappoint anyone, but we're not dissolving OHAC tonight, so. I think part of this is, and I might defer to Gordon Bond on this, but basically, we want to know what the future is of OHAC, what you, what you have in mind. And I think Ken was here, I'm not sure I can still see him or not. Oh, there he is.
Excuse me, to build on that, it, it's a fact that at a previous meeting, I had raised the question of the relevance of OHAC today versus five, 10, 20 years ago. And the reason for that was, like Ken's statement, OHAC had nothing to do with the effort to shoot down the proposed ordinance or the proposed interlocal agreement that was voted down by the town a few weeks ago. And further to that, like Ken's statement, OHAC has nothing to do as an organization with the proposed or the effort to create a new interlocal agreement. And that's, that's based on information that were received at town at these meetings. And with that, I did question the relevance of OHAC. If OHAC is not going to be involved in any of those issues, why should OHAC continue?
Okay, so, thank you, thank you for the, I appreciate the chance to address. So, from last month's meeting, no, select person Paige asked, what is the relevance of OHAC when there is already an APAC Airport Public Advisory Committee in place? Chairman Bond now requests it. Ken Rexer attends the next four meetings, guiding the role of OHAC. So, let me explain again, if I could. And when the post brought this up today, there is all the difference in the world between APAC and OHAC. There's 10 people on OHAC, on APAC, 10, 10 members. Four are on airport business, commercial pilots, Knox County Fly, country business, county business is now represented by Jeff Northgrays, who would ask the question, who does he represent? He represents the business, and he only wants to see what happens that was best for the businesses of the airport. So four out of 10 pretty much locked in to what's best for the airport. District one is Owl's Head. We have a representative, duly elected. District two is from, is up in coverage from Warren. In all 20 years that I've been on APAC meetings, all the district two cares about is that their taxes don't go up on account of the airport, and they aren't impacted very much. And they just like to see whatever revenue can get up, come from the airport. District three is the islands, and they mainly care and vote for what's good for Palm Square Island Air, who the counties are about to subsidize for a $4 million dollar handover. So now you have four and three, four and two is six. Now there's four seats left. One is a delicate seat to Owl's Head, thanks to the county commissioners who gave that to us. One is, is South Thompson. And South Thompson's interests may not be the same as ours. Next is the environmental, which is, can be from anywhere, and they are mainly there to represent environmental issues. And hopefully, they would, their interests and Owl's Head would be aligned. But at best, at best, is two votes, or, or three votes, that are really concerned of Owl's Head at these APAC meetings. And I just also want to point out that for four years, through the single-handed efforts of Jeff Northgrays, we had no representatives. That is, enlightened none. And finally, we were able to change that by many of us in the town and OHAC. So there's really a, a select board, no comparison. APAC is concerned about the airport. OHAC is concerned about the town. Now, the remarks that I made to board are correct because a few years ago, the town eliminated what OHAC could do. And they felt that OHAC was being a little too, you know, much on their own. We scheduled a bus trip in conjunction around the airport with, with the airport manager. We had meetings, we worked hard to downsize that huge parking area in front of the airplane parking area, which is too big now, but it was going to be a third bigger. And we were very instrumental in getting this very sophisticated storm drainage system in. So what I said to you is mainly we have a reporting function. That is what the selectmen made clear to OHAC, to report to the selectmen. As a matter of fact, we had one member who quit. Peter Harrison said, I, I'd like to do something, I just don't want to report to the select. So, many a time I've come here and I've told you what's been going on in the airport, and you've always been very respectful to me and thankful. Tom, I said a number of times that he thought he was, that he thanked OHAC for what they were doing. So, when you were asking me what OHAC had to do with the interlocal agreement, I said, no, nothing. Because I didn't think it was within our boundaries to do it. And so, the initial interlocal agreement was put forth by a group of citizens. It's just, just an ad hoc committee. We, we weren't informed, we didn't have a webpage, we didn't have anything. The floor five was working hard to try to get an interlocal agreement that would represent the interests of the town. If I could just address for a minute a point Linda made. The agreement that you signed was not the OHAC agreement, Linda. The agreement, the agreement that went to the commissioners by the group of citizens through you came back totally changed, and, and totally changed. And Dick and I, and a few others were sitting here and said, this is not the same agreement. Please don't sign it. It's got the wrong map, it's, it's got the wrong list, it's got the wrong map. And, and Mr. Page, with all due respect, you said, I've had enough of this. I moved, we signed a thing, the three who signed it, it off and went, okay? And I think by the vote of 124 of 14, three of which is you, ones which is Jeremy, you're pretty well, so there's eight people sitting there who believed that if you were in England, that was a vote in a conference. So, really, so you're kind of wrong. We're, the people, we're, we're not biased against the airport. We're pro-town, and we, we would let our selectmen be pro-town. That's what we're trying to accomplish. And that's why OHAC is important. I would like to see OHAC, and I'm trying to stay on the subject of what's the relevance of OHAC. I would like to see they have more relevance. I would like to see us involved in more things. Perhaps when this interlocal agreement is behind us and all this stuff is done, we can get back, I, I mean, the, the, OHAC has a role to play. The airport has lots of plans. The airport has lots of money. And we have to make sure that the impact is considered of what is going to happen to Owl's Head. This is our town. 97% of that airport is in our town. Our esteemed budget director always says, he's said it a dozen times, the number, the airport is the number two taxpayer. Well, the number one taxpayers are taxpayers, and there's no number three. So, so, let's, let's keep everything in, in reality here. It's just the taxpayers. And the taxpayer that think of town, you, then let's pay attention to what's going on over there. We don't want more noise, we don't want more this, we don't want more that. Pay attention to the town of Owl's Head. That's all that we are asking for. We're not biased, we're not, we're not, anything, except trying to do what's best for the town. So I am encouraged to hear you, Mr. Tom, So, I am encouraged to hear you, Mr. Tom, say that you're not here to just dissolve OHAC. I thought that was what this claim of future of OHAC to me means, well, there might be no future. So, um, that, you know, that's what it says in what's the relevance. I like to think OHAC has relevance, I like to bring it back to having more relevance, we have some new members, we've got some, a lot of interests, we've got some new people in town who are interested in OHAC. So, I urge you to continue, to keep OHAC alive and functioning for the town. In fact, and if you know, and none of us have actually raised in all these years.
On the interlokal agreement, we worked a year and a half or so on that, and at a certain point, we wanted to present it to the town and let the town make the decision.
And we did.
And you, and you did. So, it wasn't like we were trying to ram anything down.
Um, well, it's, it's
I personally felt that an agreement was better than no agreement, but, you know, I was proven that the town didn't want that, so that's fine.
So, I'm trying to, hopefully, okay, as you know, and I've near and told you this many a time, we, the group of us, are working on, we just talked about this, I knew an interlokal agreement, trying to update that. Um, it's coming right along, I'll play news, I'll talk to this in front of you. We're going to review it with Jeremy and get the county's input, and we'll have a sort of a starting point. I mean, this is all being done informally, not costing the town any money. Um, we're trying to keep this process moving, and we hope to be back to you shortly with an interlokal agreement that works for us, that works for the county. You've heard the county say loud and clear, they're willing to renegotiate. Our commissioner said it, our commissioner, meaning the one who represents us. So, hopefully, we can make that happen.
I mean, I was understanding when this all started, we tasked the OHAC group was coming up with this interlokal agreement. I thought we tasked, asked your group to put something together, because you guys, maybe you were working on it as an ad hoc, and every time we talked about it, you were here telling us what you would say. So, I thought it was the OHAC that we had asked to pull this together.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying, I can understand.
But we did ask OHAC to review it.
Yes, we did, we did, we did review it, but we didn't, but we did not agree with what the county sent back. If I gave you a redlined version of what we sent over there, what the county sent back, you'd be astounded with what the county changed. And they changed it in their interest, well, that's their job, okay? It needed another round of negotiations, in my opinion.
Further to that, in terms of requesting OHAC or taxing them to do that work, Ken, you had come before the select board beyond a year and a half ago and said, this interlokal agreement is coming up for expiration and renewal. Would you like us, OHAC, to review this and get a document started? And we said, yes, please, and would you agree with that?
Yes.
So, the question that I have is, did OHAC decide to step back from that at some point, and this other group of individuals to which you refer took over that opportunity?
I say, we, I understand it didn't take over, it all was kind of intermeshed.
So, how many of, how many members of then-OHAC became part of that ad hoc committee?
There was, there was five of us, there was Dick, there was Lenny, um, there was me, Catherine helped, um, and, um, I guess it was the four of us.
So, those, all four of those people were members of OHAC?
No, 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 no.
So, which, how many members of OHAC at the time became part of the ad hoc committee that worked on that, other than you?
Two of us.
Who were they?
Myself, Catherine de Molojean, and I, for the life, I mean, one other person, if I could remember his name, I would invite him to be here.
Charles Salletti.
Honey?
Charles.
No, Charles, not well, um, it's, it's the husband and wife team, she's a real darita. Um, they're a long time Alleshead representative, I can't remember.
Oh, Salletti? No, that's
So, should we assume that that individual is no longer involved?
No, no, no.
That person is no longer
No, don't assume that, he is still, he's still, the OHAC is still, is still, uh, going. We did have one person who quit, who was on the original list, it was approved by the town at last year's meeting.
So, how many, how many members currently are OHAC, and who are they?
There's me, there's Catherine, um, I don't have to listen to you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's in the book, there may be new ones, no ones.
Your secretary is in a lot.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, okay, it's, 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 yeah, Charlie Salletti, who's a sort of emeritus, Lauren Schlossbach, me, Robert Nims, who did retire from the committee. She had a conflict because you were an attorney, and her office didn't allow them to do stuff like that. And, um, and Catherine de Molojean.
So, that sounds like a total of four.
Yes.
What happened to Peter Harrison?
Peter Harrison was resigned because of what he more, more
Well, he was down in nineteen, twenty nineteen.
So, if I'm hearing incorrectly, Ken, the current makeup of OHAC is four people?
Yes.
Okay, so there's been some speculation that Ken Wexler is OHAC, and that OHAC is Ken Wexler. And there's been some speculation, some, some statements made around town, that perhaps with the exception of the hundred and fourteen people who voted against the interlokal agreement, that Ken Wexler has lost his ability to be objective in any matter related to the airport. And that's because you serve on OHAC, you serve on the planning board, you serve on conservation committee, and you've served on a number of committees that happen to have some commingling activity or interest in airport activities. Is that fair to say?
So, I, I think you should give me a net of my criticism.
Let's, let's keep it.
So, so number one, all of those committees I'm on, my wife does think I should have my head examined, is because I give for the town, okay? The, the, the planning board, okay, I was appointed on the planning board by the selectmen, okay? And I think I've done a, a, a good job on the planning board. I've been on the ordinance committee, I was on previous ordinance committee, and I'm on this ordinance committee. Again, we were appointed to be in a committee, this is not just a mayhem committee. Where, where, the town has rules and regulations, there's, there's only ordinances, there's ordinances, and I'm not going to get dragged into the discussion of the woodman's. A lot of what they said is not, the planning, that's not what you asked. So, I'm happy to be able to serve on all these committees, and I don't think that it, it, it's, it's to spot me from any way to be unable to serve the town, which is what I'm trying to do.
Okay, I just, since you are on the planning board, I wish you would, um, pass along our wish that they make a decision, get the public hearing set, so we can just get this behind us, one way or the other. We don't really care what the town votes as so much as we want the town to vote.
I understand.
Yes, Ken.
Hey, I, so, I just feel badly for Ken defending himself here. I just met Ken about a year and a half ago with the whole thing coming up with the library. I attended lots of your meetings, I have never seen him be anything but positive, positive and trying to help. He sees both sides, he, he comes to your meetings, I've heard with how he reports to you, he's positive. He's trying to find, um, the medium, you know, a compromise sometimes, but he just, and I know how hard he works with this town, so it's breaking my heart to hear what Gordon just said. And it's, and it's not true, it's not just Ken Wexler, yes, he's on a lot of things, who else would be on those things? I, you know, I see them, I mean, as you guys know, it's hard work, and he's willing to put it in, I know you guys are putting it in, but how many people do that? And so, we should be honored and thrilled that he's helping the town the way he is. And again, the reality is, it's not just Ken Wexler, he's a driver for sure, he's a leader.
Well, certainly, as far as OHAC goes, I don't know if we really ever intended that you were just a reporting group. Um, certainly, if, if you, I would think the more active you are, would be the better.
OHAC was formed before I became the selectman, so I don't know
OHAC, OHAC came out of, way, out of the moratorium, which, which I wasn't on any, that was soon after that I was on.
And I was on the planning board at the time.
You were.
Under the moratorium.
And I just remember that, I think the first issue you brought up when I was here was the, um, the trees around the airport.
Oh, yeah.
Catherine had a question.
Okay.
Well, just Catherine de Molojean, Nine Main Street, um, I guess two things, you know, the idea that, the idea that, um, you know, with OHAC, I think there's only three of you, and there's a lot of stuff coming on in this town. And we don't expect that you're supposed to be everywhere, hear everything, you know everything. So, I think to have, you know, for lack of a better word, you know, good watchdog groups, is really good. It's really good, it helps, because we all want the same thing, and that's what we can't forget. We're all on the same page, we step on each other's toes, and I think that, that that hasn't paid off so well. You know, I think we all want the same things, and as far as, um, you know, as far as Ken's being, and, and, you know, and I think it's, I think questions are good, you know, it's good for us to take a look at things. Are we objective, is this happening, is that happening? But I think that Ken will tell you, he and I have argued probably more than we've had happy conversations. Um, I love solar energy, I love the airport, I use it all the time, he does too, he loves the airport, but it's just, so the point is that the, the group is balanced, you know, we, we really argue on a lot of things. And, um, you know, there's times that, um, you know, not to, not to go on about that, but it happens in the conservation commission. So, I think the people who are on board to be working on these things, you know, it's thankless, we all know that. But the, it isn't thankless with regard to the safeguarding of our town. So, and then I just want to thank all of us for putting the time, and, you know, and even helping the, you know, our, our airport manager. He lives, he lives and works in Alleshead, and he wants the best things too. This committee that continues down the road, we don't know what's going to happen twenty-five, thirty years down the road. But the airport manager may be looking to OHAC and to the town to say, hey, support me here, back me up with the county, because this needs to happen. So, anyway, that's it, thanks for listening.
That's a good, valid last point, yes, ma'am.
Um, this is only my second town, uh, town meeting, so I want to make sure I understand the, the process and the policy here. The selectmen appoint the planning board and the Alleshead Airport Committee, they appoint those boards, correct?
Yes.
And so, those boards report to the select, correct?
Uh,
They serve some
Not really, the, OHAC does, the planning board doesn't.
Planning board has responsibilities and statutes.
By statute, but they are not autonomous to the selectmen, or they are autonomous of the selectmen?
I would say they have a higher level of autonomy than
Right, yeah.
And then when it comes to the airport committee, the selectmen would task their own duly-appointed committee to do certain things.
We can, yes, and we have in the past.
And is that outlined somewhere where it's, it's a matter of record in minutes or something like that, where people would know what, what, what they're supposed to be doing?
Well, I think it's some of the meetings, when we've asked them to do certain things, then that would have been recorded, but there's no, there's no chatter or thing that says, you know, we're going to tell them to do this, this, and this, it can't be at a meeting.
Then my last question would be, moving forward, um, at, at the meeting about the airport in early June, it was said that Ken was working on a new interlokal agreement. Now, if he is, or his group, that he and his group are, um, is it, is the airport Alleshead Committee that's doing that? And are they approved by the selectmen to take that on? Um, I, I think, I don't feel like I'm clear at all about the authority of the group to take it on.
Okay, technically, they have no authority, but we, we are willing to listen to their proposal when and if it ever arrives.
So, they would negotiate with the county without the selectmen being involved?
No.
To come up with an agreement?
No, they're not negotiating, but they're coming up with what they would like as their ideal, and we have suggested to them that they get the county's input on that first, because we don't want to go through a year and a half like we did before of something that's going to get killed.
So, so they do have standing then, the selectmen, to do what they're doing?
No.
Not the ad hoc?
They have a suggestion from the selectmen, they do it.
No.
No, they just do it.
They have told us that they are working, and we have said we will listen to their results.
I happen to come from an airport environment where we had a neighbors committee, and we, we worked collectively with all the communities that lived around our airport. So, I am used to a much more structured situation of that community involvement, um, and people, people knew and understood. Uh, this to me was, is still a bit confusing, but, so be it.
Oh, would you give your name?
My name is Linda Green, uh, twenty-six years old.
Thank you.
With the OHAC, I would see going forward that be perhaps a little bit more structure than there was before. I mean, going way back until maybe this year, there was no announcements of meetings, nobody knew when you met, where you met, no notes taken, there was just nothing people could go back and refer to, and if we're going to go forward with this, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more structure, and I'd also like to make sure that the information you put out is correct. Don't just give us the information because you think this is what it sounds like or whatever, let's, let's make sure that it's true with the airport manager or whatever, instead of just, you know, throwing out, well, I think the airport's going to do this. So, we need something with some, you know, some real facts in it, not just, you know, suggestions or innuendos or threats that this is going to be. Someone wrote an email and said they're afraid that Boeing seven thirty-sevens are going to be wetting here with eighteen-passenger bombers, I don't know what a bomber is, maybe the airport manager can tell me what a bomber is. Those kinds of things are out there for some reason. Someone's either sending emails, or calling them up on the phone, or sending out anonymous letters with, they don't have the courage to sign it, they just say citizens, and that's, that's what is kind of annoying about this whole thing. It's not you, it's not you, your group, I don't believe, that's doing this.
Thank you for saying that, there's been a lot of misinformation around. So, my, I have a couple of ted orders. One, as soon as we get in, done with this interlokal agreement or the next step, um, perhaps we'll work out a little mission statement, and submit it to you for approval, and say, this is what we see us doing. Most organizations have a mission statement, this is what we see OHAC's roles, and then come to an agreement, word-stiffed with the selectmen, and then we'll, then we'll have, then we'll, then we'll have that done. Um, and, and as, as, as soon as this ad hoc committee has done its job, its self-imposed job, so if we can go back and, I, I hope that DPO, we can all work together, the OHAC committee, we have some very engaged members now, it wasn't ours the case, and I think we can serve the town well.
Okay, the woman on, on the father's side there, yes.
My name's Lauren Swartz, I'm from New York, I'm glad. The letter to which we're referring, that was an anonymous letter, so I'm working with Alleshead Citizens. Alleshead Citizens represents a lot of people.
Who's the principal of, who is?
We still have a singular principal, there's
Do we have names for this group?
So, you want names because you want to spotlight away from the actual problem or the concern of the issues, and I don't really understand the point of that. So, I am new to Alleshead, I'm not good at name, I grew up here, but I understand that Alleshead is a separate thing. So, there are people who are coming in that have, how can we help, what can we do? We want to participate, we want to understand, we don't understand what is happening, what the locals about, what it represents. Thanks to Ken, he's been a shining light in the darkness of information. A lot more people are interested because they realize they have to understand, and under, with all due respect, haven't had a lot of guidance from our town leadership. So, my point, there are many people that are part of Alleshead Citizens. I guess, unfortunately, by projects, we're living in a small town, these people are being vilified by their neighbors or people that they've grown up with, but they have polar opposite opinions about things that are hot topics, so to speak. And as far as Ken or OHAC going to Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw's hardly a figurehead of neutrality on riots, so I don't really understand. There has to be a balance here. So, OHAC can't dissolve so long as there's an airport and that there are people living with an Alleshead that carry that it's here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to clarify something about, I, I stated in an earlier meeting that I value the volunteers in town of Alleshead. And please don't misinterpret my disagreements on certain issues with Ken Wexler for disrespect for Ken Wexler. I do respect the fact that you work hard. We are not in agreement on a number of things, but that doesn't mean, I don't want that to diminish your value to the town. You can certainly do good things for the town without demonstrating, again, what I think is your inability to be objective in this matter. And the topic came up about planning board and fairness of Ken, and Ken being open-minded and positive, but I would ask Ken, as a member of the planning board, you've been on the losing end of two, three, two votes in the planning board, and you have filed appeals against those votes, and I'm wondering how that's positive in being in favor of the majority rule?
Well, so, that's, um, the, the reason that I appealed the planning board decision was
Two decisions.
Well, I was going to answer on both of the factors, but the one that I recently appealed, um, had to do with the, in my opinion, the ordinance clearly says that in, in cases of disputes, it's the boundaries, the Board of Appeals should be the deciding factor. The planning board, in its wisdom, on its own, decided what the borders of a particular protective wetland would be, protected zone would be. And I, I, I didn't, don't want to go against my old planning board that I'm on, and I wasn't trying to be negative about it. The planning board made a mistake, in my opinion, and there were others in the board who wanted it to vote to the zoning Board of Appeals where it needed to be. So, I raised my hand and do it, so I'm like the lightning woman, everybody's, oh, look at this guy, appealing again. But this thing needs to be, in my opinion, be happy, if you look at the board, if you look at the appeal, it's, it's, uh, uh, hell has it. It's pretty clear, it's just over, who does make the decision, it's clear that there's a boundary dispute. But I say that dispute has to be solved by the, the Board of Appeals, and that's, that's why I appeal that.
Thank you.
Yes, Lynn.
I would just say that I think that
I would just say that I think that when you live in a town and you have topics here that directly impact you, that people are going to have opinions. I don't think having opinions are bad, I think they're good. I think that the responsibility of having opinions is that you have to keep it polite and fair in the process. And I think that that's one of the things that we're trying really hard to do, and all we can do is keep trying.
Yes?
Maybe, I agree with Linda's point, I know Linda, and I know she's had a big job at Big Airport in Baltimore. Again, what she's trying to say, I think the questioning is, we really need a committee that reports to the selectman that has the power to negotiate and do the work. So I don't know if today the selectman wants to appoint OHAC to work with this ad hoc committee and then take everything in and then make what Linda was asking for, which is a firm suggestion based on what their homework is. I don't know, Ken, if you would find that helpful?
That's not weird. It's, Kenny, we're so, we're like really close to having this agreement done.
And then maybe further that, though, the selectman gives you guys the power.
No, I don't think, I don't even think so, because we have no, this is different between the town of Owl's Head, represented by a selectman, and the county commissioner, represented by the county. I mean, I think that's really clear, and it was clear from the beginning. So, the county is not going to give us any credence at all if we come there. It would just be a bunch of citizens sitting there. So what we're really going to try to do, what we, not really, we are going to try to do, is bring something to the selectman that, and Germany doesn't have the approval problem, he can't approve, but we know that. What we're counting on him to do is saying, this apply, this apply, forget it, this will never apply. Okay, to try to save several steps here, so that we can decide what we present to the selectman. In the end of the day, it's the selectman's decision, 100%, what this, what this initiative is going to say.
Well, it's the town people.
Yes, we're the town people, well.
We just present it to the town.
Yes, we're the townspeople, we were at that.
We used to ask about chief of spoke about respecting other people's opinions. Well, I would ask that they respect the selectman's opinion when they voted last month for this interlocal agreement, that was our opinion. And you're talking about respecting, but to get emails and people are saying, we're not this, we're not that, and whatevers. Now, I'm not interested in all of that, but I have respect, it needs to go both ways.
Yes, ma'am, on the right, my right, you.
Okay, I just want one more clarification for me, because I didn't hear properly. Committee currently working on the interlocal agreement is an ad hoc committee, not the Owl's Head Airport Committee.
Correct.
Correct, and it is not our ad hoc committee, we did not appoint an ad hoc committee. It is citizens working on their own.
But you condone that they're doing, or you something?
We said that we will listen to.
Anybody can put a committee together, meet and talk and whatever, then bring it to us, and this is what we've come up with, we're going to listen to them.
Because I think for me, because the last interlocal agreement hasn't applied, there is no local agreement now. So the town is without, the town is without any official input or organizational structure to work with the airport and the county on airport issues. So that's why I'm trying to get to the detail of what this group is, and I didn't hear ad hoc, I thought you were using the abbreviation for Owl's Head Airport. I got it now.
All right, so Lori, do you have any more to?
No, I'm glad Ken was here and had an opportunity to present. And as the chair pointed out, we weren't here tonight to dissolve OHAC tonight. And I'll put the term "tonight" in quotes, because I think once the ad hoc, AD, HOC, ad hoc committee completes its work, we still don't, we can't sit here today and say that's going to be successful if that interlocal agreement will pass. We don't know that. We don't know that it'll even get to a point where it'll pass muster with county and FAA. I would suggest that this will come up again after that.
And you can work on your.
Mission statement.
Mission statement, yes.
Out of full account, I was saying, I just want to say, observing this over here and watching the woodmen struggle through a year and a half of paperwork, whatever the answer may be, it has to be either, they're dragging finances, and everybody is. It's wasting your time, it's wasting the town's time. And we could be moving on to different things if we just told them right away, no, you can't do anything about it, sorry, or you can do something about it, go with good luck. Or we look at like this OHAC committee and APAC and ad hoc committee, which is really neat that we live in a small town of Owl's Head, that the selectboard can say, yeah, sure, we'll take that. Sure, we'll let you go write a proposal, bring it to us, we'll approve it, send it to the county. You know, I know in the past, this town has gotten bit by a drawing on paper napkins or whatnot, as we all know. But we, as citizens, we're in this town. We need to keep it small, we need to allow the selectboard to make decisions, we need to allow them to give little committees or take credence from what maybe Ken says in his ad hoc committee that would be good for the town. You know, keep the town small, don't over-regulate it, because we're going to regulate ourselves back to a third-world country. You know, I'm not looking at South Thomasston's little debacle or project over there on 131, but I didn't know that was coming, but it happened quick. You know, now it can remind me I'm up in financial jeopardy. But things need to happen quick. Let those small committees make decisions or give guidance, because you guys have real lives and better move along every day. Like you said, you can't be involved in everything. But I liken that you gave Ken the direction to work with the county and come up with something, you know, because I think that's really cool. And that's what's good about a small town area. Don't over-regulate it, don't follow every, I'm not saying follow procedures and policies, but don't look for procedures and policies. Keep it simple.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we'll wrap this up in a moment, thank you, Ken, for all your work, as usual. Next item is town administrator position. I think maybe we'll skip that for a moment and go on to.
Are we going to go back to it?
Yeah.
Okay, because I had some information from Top Thomasston.
All right, well, I just want to hit items with people here who may not like to help. Let's go to Michael Von Kahn on the cemetery committee.
Hi, Michael Von Kahn, representing the cemetery committee. Walter Duckto would like to work on some headstones in Hall Cemetery. He qualified to do it, there will be mowing, I think Bill Gay will be assisting him. However, he needs some materials. For instance, he needs some stone dust, he probably loaves and seds. We, as a committee, are out of money. And I think it's been, an issue, we've been hogtied the last four years with having tree maintenance on our plate. And it didn't used to be in our budget. And we haven't literally been able to do much because of 1,300, 1,800, all kinds of money we spend on trees, which honestly, I think belongs, and I believe the committee will agree with me, that it belongs in the maintenance part, street trimming and mowing, not in this cemetery committee budget. We've just not been able to do what we want or should be doing properly. So, given that, that's really two things, I've kind of pushed into one. We would like to have you through Walter's expenditure of no more than $200 for this material for this summer, probably end of July, probably through August, I believe is his timeframe. So if he could procure and he could reimburse, or he can have George Hall give you, you know, send receipts or whatever he decides to spend as far as seed and mown. And if he could think seriously, come this budget time of putting tree maintenance, and we would be happy, as a committee, to arrange for tree trimming, tree removal, tree anything, it's just, I don't believe it should be in our budget. And if the three of you could give some serious thought to having that in another part of the town's budget versus our annual budget.
Okay, Bob, you're listening to that, so.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, you requested $2,500 for your budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is that 200 in there?
Uh, no.
Why not?
I don't think they knew of it.
One, we didn't know about this project we wanted. Two, it's higher than we normally ask, because we have to assume that we're going to have at least 1,500 or more tree maintenance. It doesn't leave us with much, it's not something we can forecast. We didn't realize the windstorms in January, February would then cause a problem.
I think if you can maybe increase the maintenance budget, maybe by 1,000 or to cover trees, that's what we're suggesting.
Maybe 1,500, it seems to be about what we're.
You know, we're responsible for perpetual care, and in my mind, taking care of the trees and stuff like that is perpetual care, which perhaps should be in that budget. Yours is sort of maintaining the stones, cleaning them, and stuff that we never did before. We never had a cemetery committee that did that.
Signs, trash, things, yeah.
Right, overseeing its maintenance really is part of perpetual care, perhaps should be in the maintenance, cemetery maintenance budget.
Well, it certainly should be part of the cemetery budget, it's trees in the cemetery, so.
Right, but not this cemetery committee's budget, it's two separate things. This carries fee for mowing and cleanup in the spring and whatever, perhaps it should be in that part of the budget, no matter who does it, in that part of the budget.
Right, but, I mean, so we've got 16,200 for mowing.
Right.
That's in the cemetery, that goes in the cemetery budget.
Right.
The request was for 2,500, which I've added to the 16,200.
Yep.
And if there are other things, then submit, you know, we're right in the middle of the budget right now. So if you know of other expenses that are going to be done in this current fiscal year, tell us now, so I can put it in there.
Well, I think what we're saying is increase the mowing by the 1,500, so there has money for tree removal if needed.
Well, I mean, I can itemize all of that stuff in here, so tree removal isn't mowing. If you have a separate somehow you think that's going to be required for that, just let me know what it is, and I'll put it in there.
We don't know, that's, we think it's more appropriate.
Okay, if I may, what we're saying is include $1,500 for tree removal if needed. If may not be used.
Well, if it's not used, that's fine.
That's fine.
Is 1,500, does that make sense for your committee, I mean?
No, this is.
Don't you think they should be separate? There should be the cemetery committing and then the cemetery expense.
We're saying 2,500, 1,500, and 16,000 are the, are all in that account, is what you're saying.
That's fine, so I'm going to increase that by 15. I mean, seems to me the cemetery committee should be responsible for overseeing all the activities at cemetery.
Well, we're not, we're not in charge of mowing or street trimming or a few other things. I don't, I don't think trees, we are more making sure day-to-day things go, restoration, that sort of thing, signs.
But who is responsible for the trees?
It used to be the town.
Right, it should be the, under the cemetery, the mowing and the upkeep and stuff, which is perpetual care.
Yeah.
That should include it, which is we hire whoever we hired to do the mowing and whatever part of that, so I think it should be two separate budget items. Cemetery committee, whatever you want to call it, which is for, you know, restoring, we've restored a lot of, they've restored a lot of stones and, you know, things like that. And then the actual maintenance, which has to be done, you know, the mowing, if trees fall down, they have to clean those up, the trees are leaning or whatever they need to do. I think they should be two separate.
No, I itemized the stuff separately in the place where the cemetery-oriented funds occur.
Well, right now, it says new, it says, on the cemetery, it says new, and then it says expense, and that's the two things in the book, this book anyways.
Well, there's two things with cemetery, there's the new cemetery, which is an account that has $900 associated with the loan and $1,400 associated with bushwalking and mowing.
Right.
And then there's the cemetery, which is 16,200 for mowing, 2,500 for the cemetery committee, and now an additional 1,500 for trees.
Right, but they're not separate in this book, this is what I'm saying, and they should be.
No, we itemized everything in there that they would be a total.
Well, no, I think it should be.
Now, I want to get back to the $200.
Right.
We're trying not to reimburse people, so he should, whatever he means, he should let the town office know, and they can order, or they can give him the credit card to use.
No, don't.
Pay, give him his credit card, pay card, whatever. Have an invoice and pay for it, an invoice perhaps for it.
Okay.
An invoice and then pay for it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to mention this, but what about the fence around the cemetery? It is.
Which cemetery?
Which cemetery? The old one.
They're all old.
Oh, that's one, that's one draw.
We've not had money?
Okay, what about just taking it down? It's such an eyesore.
I don't think you can.
Yeah, technically, if there's veterans, it should be fenced. We don't have the money to do it for all, but that is something that's on our list to do. We just, every year, we're facing trees, and all of a sudden, a thousand or 2,000 alternating, which is not the restoration amount we have in our capital reserve account, that's more total restoration, that's more like a maintenance kind of thing that I realized we should do, and we just have not had that chunk of money. But it is on our list.
All right, thank you. I've got all your items today?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So, just to clarify, Walter Duckto will go to the town office with a list of materials necessary for the work that he wants to do?
Do you want the invoices from where he procures it? Or do you want a list and then?
We don't want him using his money.
Credit, right.
And then getting reversed from the bank.
So how do you want him technically?
So if he's ordering it, he's ordering it, or he's having the town order it, if you follow what I'm saying.
Walter is not a resident of Owl's Head, so I think it would be best if he comes to the town office, gives the list to the town, makes the purchase.
He'd probably do it in one place, I mean, he's not going to go here, and here, and here, and things. He's going to go to wherever it is, so wherever, and say, okay, this is what we need.
Two places, yeah.
Yeah, they can give an invoice.
And as far as $200.
Purchase a lot of type of thing.
We can find that in contingency or something.
Okay.
It's not going to break our budget, $200.
Right. It's a new year anyway, it's a new year anyway, so.
All right, do we have a 100th anniversary report?
Let's do, let's do DMM.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Because the anniversary is being.
I have to leave at 15.
Can we? I think we were the first on the list, no second.
Okay, let's quickly do him, because usually we just say, okay.
Can I ask a question first?
Yeah.
Should this not be done in the executive session where it's a person on that?
It isn't.
It isn't, because we're not talking about a person.
We're just talking about a position.
Okay, well, we have to give the reasons why we feel we need it, I mean, is that?
I think in the future you can, but I had some information that, you know, from the town, South Thomasston, that perhaps should start the discussion.
Yeah.
Because it's going to cost $100,000, you know, it's going to be, so I think we need to have that first.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's, it's executive. Yeah, no, I, I, I don't think it's, it's, um, executive, uh, session or here at this point. So, um, you've got, we've got the annual two-year or the?
Yes.
I always wonder if that's by annual or, or not. I guess by annual can be half a year and two years.
Right, well, this is the two-year.
Yeah.
And I'm Josh, I'm with DM and Jay Lee.
So.
So things have gone up a little bit, mostly because of fuel. I paid 300, 300.
Yep, fuel is probably all of it, because gas fees have gone up, landfill because of fuel, and also because of wages. Wages have gone up a lot, you know, the person driving the truck or working at the landfill or whatever. Anything steel has gone through the roof. So the containers that are, I would say probably 25 to 35% more expensive. Um, the trucks have gone up in price substantially. Um, and then, like I said, with the labor, minimum wage went up, so that drove everything. And then the COVID, and then people not going to work, and the line yards. So we have to pay the drivers a lot more these days than what we used to, so.
I guess my question would be, um, the use, is our usage gone up or?
I think it's been about the same. I don't think it's gone up, no.
When the chair is full, who makes the call to DM and Jay for reward?
It's the attendant that works at the transfer station and his name.
Tyler.
Tyler, yeah, Tyler calls.
So it's Tyler that makes that call?
Yep, yeah, and he does a great job. We've never had any issue with Tyler. He calls, they're levelful, there's no mess. The drivers don't complain about it, it's been good.
Does your organization ever have any communication with Frank Ross?
Yes, Frank calls me direct when he wants the ash taken care of, because we get it left for him. And he also calls me, sometimes you guys need an extra container for like a three-day or whatever deal. That's about the only time I hear from him.
Any other questions? I don't even take a motion.
I would, what is the price of, of diesel now?
330 a gallon.
Okay, so the surcharge is already in effect?
Yep, yeah, it was, it was on the old one.
Okay, because it, it's up to 325 is non, but then 326 to 350. So the, the 4 cents is in effect then, right?
Yep, oh, yeah, on 230, yes.
Okay.
4 cents or 4%?
4%.
4% also.
Yeah, it's fluctuating right now, right around 320 to 330, yeah.
Right?
We have a motion.
Only motion that we approved the contract, the DM and Jay. Time frame of, of two years, is there a staff date on this one?
On July 1st.
Okay, commencement of July 1st for a two-year term.
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion?
Yes, what's the approximate percent increase versus what it was?
It was, it goes up 4% every time fuel jumps 25 cents.
I'm, I'm, on the total, can you give me your number? So the, the expense, uh, this past fiscal year.
You mean on the, on the trucking, like the 295, what we tried to haul it?
Well, the, the total expense there was 69,800.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, do we have a ballpark of what the increase on that base is gonna be?
I couldn't give that to you right now on top of my head. Can I get back to you on it?
Oh, it would be good, because I'm.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Let me give you a card and you can email or whatever. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Pass this for, oh, thank you. Uh, next, we're gonna do the county administrator position. I need one more signature on this one.
Thank you.
Do you wanna do it then?
Oh, are you ready?
No, I mean the.
Oh, the signature?
Yes, one more signature. Then we can go to the county administrator position, which has been suggested by the, the staff.
Yeah, I had an email from Curry Bates in, in South Palmeston. I just asked a basic question, just that, uh, what the pay was, uh, the hours they worked, and just an overview of their duties. And this is what she returned to me in the email. The administrative assistant makes 1837 an hour. He does payroll and accounts payable weekly. He and the other person in the office share a check regarding duties. He answers the phone, he is second to the counter. If the counter person is busy, he is registered voters and deputy clerk and deputy attorney, works 27 hours a week as administrative assistants. That was what, you know, that's what they do down there.
Okay.
That's the administrator, that's not a town manager. That's, that, a, a town administrator is the secretary to either the selectman or the town manager.
Right, if we're going to town manager, then we have to change our whole, we're, we're no longer.
We don't need a second, not a secretary, we need somebody.
I know, but let me finish, please. If we're going to a town manager, that's a whole different form of government.
Yeah.
So that's like, uh, Rockland as a town manager. I think Camden as a town manager, so that's a whole different.
It's a town administrator is what we need, not an administrator assistant.
All right, so then we need to see the difference, because there is a, there is a difference. We change our former government, and obviously it has to be voted on to change our former government. We're no longer a board, a select board, we have town manager. So it's gonna be administrator, and that's a different.
Mr. Chair.
That's a different.
Yeah. I'd like to hear from the staff in terms of what their intent is.
Okay.
For their request.
And.
I, I don't wanna make any assumptions until you say we want an individual who will run the day-to-day operations versus somebody who will assist you all into another.
So you want us to read out little things?
Sure, okay. Something.
All right, um, to the voters selectmen town of Alseth. I was asked to clarify the reasons for request for patime town administrator. We have two employees that work four days a week. We have one employee that works two and a half days a week, a code enforcement officer that works five hours a week, and an assessor that works two days a month. We three girls cover all these departments in their absence. We've had to deal with all the restrictions of COVID and now have to deal with the grants that go along with it. We need someone who's been familiar with grant writing. I'm sure that there are a lot out there that we could be taking advantage of. We had things given to us from the selectmen that requires research for answers, as in a letter to the state to Tom Von Moll that concerning new warrant act supposed to comply with state standards. This took me some time to do. We should use, we could use someone that could be available to the selectmen to deal with legal questions and research. We could use someone that we girls could ask questions to instead of trying to get answers from all three selectmen. We've had much more added to us because of COVID. The state has had limits, limited hours, and we've had to do more for them. It would be nice to have someone who would be able to keep up with the updates that we need to comply with. I'm a certified lifetime town clerk. It took me 10 years of classes to achieve this, and a town administrator would have more training than me. They would have much more time for research needed for a select board. With the research done, it would be easier to get a decision at the select board meetings instead of carrying it over until research is done. I believe having a town administrator would be a great asset to the town, the select board, and the employees.
Mine has basically the same since COVID. I felt we needed a town manager to guide us. We might be missed out on a lot of grants and to be able to stay on top of all the updates and what changes needed to be made. We need someone who could do grants. We need, the American Rescue Plan is way over my head. And we need somebody who's qualified to work on this. We have, you know, we have done the basics, but you're gonna be doing quarterly reports and lots of more need, you know, I, all that's, I've, I've done several of their videos. And our policies are updated, a town meeting, a town manager could attend some of the other committee, like the planning board, appeals board, or go to a library meeting, not all the time, but if they have problems, they might be able to help, you know, get stuff moving with these, if they have the questions. And over the last few years, a lot of little things have been happening that makes me realize that town manager is needed. And, you know, one of the things was, um, you know, with an employee, and we had a few years ago trying to get legal information, what we could do, what we can do. Then we had to hire the lawyer, then we went back, and that took a lot of time. And it was for us to, of us in the office. Yeah, we were short-handed, and so just little stuff that comes up like that, we just feel like, it's, I gotta go. So, sorry.
So you're asking for a town manager, and you're asking for a town administrator.
She, I.
Well, I, I didn't know the difference, so.
Okay, there is a big, big, big difference.
Yes, I'm asking for a town administrator.
Yeah.
So I'm asking for somebody.
We can't call the manager.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Who's a hand in the audience?
I'll start at the first one.
Oh, Michael Von Cannon. Dare I say, perhaps the responsibilities of a sex thing can be integrated in this?
I, I already suggested that.
That's a big dare.
Yeah, that's.
I, I already suggested that, but I, first, we have to find money, I think.
And carrying out the Alseth head, I should, I, I've worked for a town and I can see absolutely that, I would concur with the staff that it's needed. The town's growing, the issues get more complex. And I know, I know how busy a town is always. There's always too few people to do too much. I think I agree totally that it would help the select board make decisions, provide information. Um, I, I just think it's a fabulous idea, probably long overdue. Um, the other thing I want to interject, I'm not interested in that. I'm not a legal person or a financial person, but just so you know, one thing I've been able to do with the library that I do on my own individually is I do consult with the office with strategic management. And I do write grants, I've never written a grant that I didn't get. So if you ever just got in the need to secure it off and do that, I would be willing to consider working with the town on that as a client, um, and giving a lot of time, like now, to the library effort. So anyways, I have support, I think you're absolutely on the right track. And yet town administrator does, is an overseer.
Right.
Town manager is usually considered a little bit more, but it's, it's basically the same thing. You're, you're the centerpiece holding it all together.
Somebody we can go to.
Yes.
Somebody they can go to.
Yeah. At this point, I think that's great. I'm willing, they were excellent for that.
Well, I'm gonna write that one down. Carrie said.
I said. She speaks for herself.
Special tax bill for.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, when you're talking about a town administrator, and you said that it would require a different form of government, what did you mean?
No, the, the town manager does, because the town manager has more authority. They hire, fire, whatever, and we're not a town manager form of government, or, you know, select board. We can change it, but we get a vote, change it.
Yes, sir.
But you have, I, I think what's happened over the years is things get more complicated around a town in all aspects, including, uh, the code enforcement officer. And he needs assistance, he asks the town to help, the town, the people working in the office, and we all do. I come in and want something, and they run around and get things for me, whatever I'm doing, trying to help the town. And the burden on them is just increasing all the time. And I, I believe one of the things that they have asked, I don't even know if they've asked for it, but I think they should get a substantial raise for what they do. They, they really do a tremendous amount of work. And sometimes you go in and they, they get too many things to do at one time. And, uh, you know, it's, it is a burden, a tremendous burden on them.
I, I know, my first thought when I heard this, and it may not work with the personnel we have, but saying you have two and a half people, or why not have three people?
She doesn't wanna work three hours.
Yeah, I'm saying it may not work with the personnel we have, but.
We need somebody that can write grants, do research for you. It's not just another third person in the office. We need somebody that we can rely on to ask questions to, get immediately an answer, to have grants written for anything that you may need, for research that you guys need, instead of us doing it. We need somebody that we can rely on for that.
If I may.
Yeah.
There's a lot of grants that have been out there for COVID and whatnot that we've missed, because we don't have the knowledge to research those different, you know, grants. It's not so much the writing it part, it's finding them first.
Well, grant writing is its own expertise.
Yeah.
Not just anybody can write.
But we have to know that there's a grant available in order to have it written. And I think that's, that's one of the things we've missed out a lot in the past year.
So, Mr. Chair, it's not abundantly clear to me that it's anything more than semantics when we talk about a town administrator versus a town manager. What you're talking about, it sounds to me, what you're talking about is a professional municipal, trained, educated, degree person to run the day-to-day operations of the town to which, well, the town clerk may still be separate, but everybody else would report to this individual. Is that your thought, is that your intent? So the fire chief, the road commissioner, the assessor's agent?
No, no, I'm not asking, because they still have to report to you, correct?
Depends, again, you know, this may be nothing more than semantics when we talk about a town manager form of government versus an administrator. You see what I mean?
Uh, it, it isn't semantics. There's a lot that a town manager can do that, that the, uh, the administrator cannot do.
Right.
Because it falls on us to do.
That's what I'm getting to, I wanna try and figure out.
Right, and it, it's really.
What they would actually do.
Yeah, it's outline exactly, you know, what each one of them can do, but do more things perhaps, but, you know, we can't have the town manager, we can't have the administrator doing these things that the town manager would do, otherwise we'd have to change our form of government.
So in the gig, they've got the.
Administrator's assistant, yeah.
Well, they call them the town administrator.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But at St. George, it's a town manager.
Right, exactly. There's a difference, because the town manager, the, the town manager would be like, like the, city of Rockland is a town manager, they have a city. But the town manager really is the, is the last.
He runs the day-to-day.
That's right, he's the last word on, on staff and whatnot, so it's. There is a difference, we know the town manager, you know, we'd have to change our form.
Right, I understand.
Right.
So, but I'm, what I'm trying to get to is what is your intent? Somebody who will run the day-to-day to which these individuals would report? Or would that individual be a standalone reporting to the select board just like everybody else?
He would be standalone, or she would be standalone to report to you, but have the time to do your wishes that we don't always have the time to do, because we've got people coming through the door, and write grants, and, I mean, yeah.
And Susan, how many hours do you think that position would be?
Just a couple days a week is all I think. You know, if you could find another town to share with, a town administrator. You know, we can split the time between the two towns. But it's gonna be somebody that's gonna be willing to, to be the middleman between you and us and, you know, all the, the different planning board and, you know, they've gotta know what's going on with everybody. That's just my view.
Like I said, there wasn't, I don't believe, one day that goes by, other than maybe a weekend, and sometimes even then, that we don't get an email from something going on in town.
Right, right. And that could be filtered through a town.
Right, and if there was someone like that here, they could deal with this stuff that we've gotta deal with, that we've gotta deal with, either through an email or calling a special meeting to make sure that this gets done.
That's exactly right.
But it just seems to me that there would have to be a firm outline of responsibilities, because by, by that individual filtering, things that otherwise would be coming to us?
Right.
I'd wanna be careful that that process doesn't usurp the authority of the select board.
Right, and it's pretty well outlined in, in, in the main municipal staff and what it, exactly what they can do. And what, if the select would lose any power, or whatever you wanna call it, not power, but under that. So it's, it's pretty well laid out, the two different positions, and what they can and can't do.
I guess my question is, um, how can we afford it?
How can you not afford that?
Well, I'm just asking about.
We can charge Carrie for it.
No. I want to comment, again, doing this work with no profits, um, they do think, oh, it'll be two days a week or whenever, and then it's interesting, well, especially with the boards I've worked with, that, you know, every person on the board who's been working really hard and feels overwhelmed says, tries to go directly to this person and says, oh, and, and can you take on this, and can you take on that? And all of a sudden, it's a full-time position. So what you wanna be careful of, which is what you just said earlier, is identifying exactly what to do. And I think the, the priorities, you guys know the priorities that you see as need, and it could just be within the office at first, it doesn't have to oversee all the other towns, feels like fire and.
No, I think.
Because that will take it full time.
Right.
Yeah, and that, that shouldn't be.
Early on in putting the budget together, but the red flags are flying like I have not seen before, with what's happened with the school budget, seven and a half percent. Other things that are percolating along broadband, uh, streetlight project, I don't know if it's gonna happen, but there's a huge increase.
Yep.
In requests for money this year. You know, I've been doing this for quite a while, I've never seen anything like what's coming this year.
Right.
So, you know, we had some restraint last year because of COVID, and people really responded to that, the number of reduced budgets by 10% is coming back in droves now. So, red flags are flying. And, you know, each year, we are foreclosing on a couple of people in this town, because they can't afford to pay the taxes.
Didn't at all last year, sorry.
But, well, you know, we had the York property, the Alseth property, you know, it's, it's not unusual foreclose, and it's, it's always a tragedy when that happens. You know, my goal in trying to do the budget for this town is to keep the taxes from going crazy. So, it's, it's just, it's reality.
Sometimes we would think about the grants and stuff, because it adds money to your budget. I, I just read in today, coming on fire, about the grant hall, and being, you know that there are grants for that, we could have said it's our grants, a grant hall, there's tons of grant halls there.
We read. They spread the COVID.
I know the COVID money.
Yep.
Then, so the town, it, it can affect the budget wonderfully, if you focus a person the right way, absolutely. And, and, and hence the town, because you guys are right, we're losing money, right? Unless it's not being right there.
Is this something that would have to be approved by a town meeting?
Yes, yes, yeah, we're gonna hire some, you know, whatever. We can hire someone, but the money's gotta be approved.
Right, right, well, I mean, the position itself.
Now, if we can hire someone to do that. In, in regard, just, I don't know, aside regards to the, to the budget, we have got to come up with $20 million in new value just to pay the school budget, increase in the school budget this year. Ain't gonna happen, folks, so I hope you're ready for.
I mean, our population is not going up in this town. School population is going down, I haven't seen the final census numbers of the new census, but what I've seen is our population is actually going down.
Well, perhaps some residents, because everybody's coming here from somewhere else. Our residents, we don't get counted. Now, we're just, just whatever.
I'm not opposed to the idea of adding staff. Um, you know, budget notwithstanding, but this is something more than just hiring somebody off the street, this would be something, we have to have some pretty specialized skills with experience. And this is not something you could hire some kid out of college and expect that individual to be able to hit the ground running. You know, we hired Amy to be our assessors agent, but she comes with years of background and experience in being an assessors agent. We don't have to micromanage her. An individual coming in here shouldn't have to feel like, they might have to learn the ropes of the town and who's who, but hiring somebody like that in a position like that shouldn't fall to Susan to have to supervise and oversee that person. That person needs to be coming in and be somewhat autonomous in their responsibilities, and not to cross over too much. I mean, you have a registrar, who's the deputy registrar? You have a town clerk, who's the deputy town clerk? So we have that overlap already, but, um, do we need that individual to then be the second deputy town clerk?
I don't think that they need to do, have a label at all like that. I think we've got that covered. If that's all we have, you know, if that's what we can do, is that, and not all the rest of the stuff that somebody else could do. You know, all the research that needs to be done, the legal questions, the, you know, if we had somebody to do that, then we can deal with, you know, the, the.
Every day.
Yeah, and the day-to-day things.
So with all.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the next step would be to draw the qualifications that we're looking for, the duties.
With, with all respect to present current staff, should the second, should the treasurer's position be a 32-hour position? Regardless whether or not Pam wants to work the two and a half days, should that position be a 32-hour position?
She seems to be able to get it done in 21 hours.
Pam, Pam asked for an additional 40 hours.
Per year?
Yeah, per year.
Per year, yeah. But that's to, her intent was to continue to work two and a half hours, two and a half days a week, with the proviso that if something came up out of the way there.
Right.
Yeah, certain times of year, there's more work.
Yes.
You know, it's not just those two and a half days, there's more work to do. And that's why we were initially, that's why we were closed on Thursday, so people could come in and do those things like they can't do with people pounding on the door, you know, but that apparently didn't.
No, it's been 13 years, it's been.
Well, I know, that was way, way back, I don't know if Dick remembers it or not, but I don't know who was on the board.
Only I had to be on Friday when I came and nothing.
Right.
Well, the reason for the question is, if Pam works two and a half days a week, and your, your suggestion is we hire somebody who works two days a week, it's four and a half days. You just said that Pam can get everything done in the two and a half days, but if we had, and again, with all the respect to Pam, if we had somebody in that position who devoted two and a half days to budget and, and treasurer duties, could that individual also do the balance in that work? What I'm asking is, do we need a whole other person, or can we do it for the other half person?
I don't think she's qualified to do that, what we're asking for.
That's fair.
I mean, she said, she said it herself.
Yeah.
Rodney Lynch, people must know Rodney Lynch.
Sure, yeah.
Was one of the most fantastic grant writers I've ever run across. A guy like that more than paid for his salary many times over with what he did for the city of Rockland. And that's a very specialized skill. So, you know, and particularly, you say, could he also be the sexton? Well, probably not, because that's also a very specialized skill. So I think we're talking a very mixed bag of things here.
Well, it's not just a grant writer that we need, it's, it's somebody that can be a good liaison between us and the selectmen. If they've got research to do, legal problems, they can rely on him and not us. They'd be able to actually have somebody that could, they could say, you know, can you look into this for me, can you do this for me, and have it qualified enough to be able to do it.
Have we done any, have we done any research on towns in Maine of similar population and the staff, office staff?
When you do that, you have to be careful, because you have to figure out how many people in the town, how many hours they spend a week, um, how much backup they have, I mean, there's a whole thing. You can look at a salary, you can look at a salary for a town administrator and South Thompson, and maybe be okay with that, but how many people are in their office?
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is there been any research that says, you've got 1,642 people in town, uh, what are the like-type-sized communities in Maine, and how many people do they employ in the office? So, in other words, does South Thompson have four people, 32 hours a week? Does St. George have three people, or four people, or five people? Do we know those numbers?
Gee, now some need to do the research.
I, I would have some need to research.
I heard that.
I would have to say also, I don't know that you could use 1,600 as a number in this respect, because that's the number of residents, but in the summer, um, you get the cottage owners and that sort of thing who have equal demands, so I don't know what that number is, actually.
It could be property owners, I mean, there's obviously no property owners that are residents.
Yeah.
Probably by 50%.
I think they still can register that kind here.
Right.
Towns like St. George and South Thompson have the same seasonal influx that we have, I think.
Yeah, you know, St. George especially, maybe not South Thompson.
But that really inflates the demand, I mean, we're not a 1,600-person community, we're really much more.
And so again, I think if we're gonna advance on this, we need to come up with a list of duties and, um, skills that we're looking for, so that ultimately we'd have to place an advertisement.
I think Maine Municipal probably has some resources along those lines.
You're only full-time town clerks and maids, Susan, that wanna cut their hours back and work just a couple days a week?
I don't think the town clerks are going to be any more qualified. I mean, you've got to have somebody that's got some legal, know how to find out legal answers, write grants, and there's, I'm gonna tell you, there's probably not too many town clerks that do that.
Someone retired from somewhere that wants to work a couple three days, making this wonderful, beautiful town, once they don't fly in.
The reason I ask about how many people work in each of those other offices is just to find out, where are we as a town?
Right.
In line with.
Compared to that.
But there's so many areas that you have to take into consideration, you have to compare.
But, I think it should be looked into sooner rather than later, you know, so.
Okay, so, I guess it's, it's up to you guys to draw.
It's up to you, you can see what you want, it's not really up to us, we, you know what we want.
Right, I'd like, I suggest that we consider, or the budget committee consider plugging in a number for the coming year, so that if we in fact move forward with employing somebody in this role that we're already prepared for. Can I imagine, Bob, would it be a separate line item in that budget, or would it be?
Yeah, it would be a, it would like be the code assessor or whatever.
From administration, but it's.
I'll throw a new line item in, and, you know, two days, what are we talking, two days a week, three days a week?
Susan says two days.
If that's salary, it doesn't matter, we work two days, you know, within reason.
Without a real clear list of what the duties are, then I think we got a problem.
Can we look at some of the other towns, just as far as maybe the size of the town, if they have one, what they pay them, I mean, it's sort of a benchmark, I mean, did they pay them 30,000, did they pay them 70,000?
We heard they'd pay 37 an hour, 27 hours.
No, that was an administrative assistant, that's secretary.
Right, 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 that was.
Okay, so that wasn't.
Totally different thing.
Yeah, it is.
Well, then we're a little wide on this, but I mean.
Yeah.
The, the whole issue around legal questions, we got Fred Nukem, I mean, we paid Fred Nukem to answer legal questions for us.
Well, MAA is a better, well, I don't say better resource, but it doesn't cost us anything, because we are paying them.
This, this individual would make those, those outreach calls.
Right.
The key thing I'm hearing to this upside would be a really good grant writer.
Well, that would be one of.
Because that can bring money into the town that we don't have right now, that wouldn't be taxed on, well, it'd be taxed money somewhere.
So I wonder, just to throw a ballpark number, $25,000 per year in budget for a 16-hour position?
For two days.
Two days a week, 52 weeks.
Right, okay.
Just, just to get the ball going, just to see where it winds up. And if the select board wants, I'm happy to make some calls and visit some of the other town offices and get a number of employees. I mean, we may be, we may find out that we're woefully understaffed, or we may be surprised to find out that we've got more people than other towns. I doubt it.
I doubt it, that's more.
Yeah, I know it too.
No, we, we run lead and need, there's no question about it.
Well, I think, you know, part of the sticking problem might be that two and a half days instead of a full-time person. You know, it's kinda handcuffing us a little bit.
But she gets her job done.
I know, I know.
I mean, there's no, nothing really more she could do with the other.
Grant writing, maybe.
You get an administrative.
Not for what we pay them, for the right grants.
But anyway, so, um, yeah, so in order to move forward, we need to know exactly what we'd be asking this person to do.
Aaron, if you can dig that up on which because.
The cost.
Okay. And I just think in the, in effect, that 25,000, if we don't use it, might go towards the surplus, and maybe we don't.
We don't pass it.
Or we don't have as much surplus this year as we've had in years past.
It's two months from now.
We had it, well. Get an extra hit with the solid waste operation too, so that's.
All right.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the 100th anniversary or four?
Yeah, we met.
Oh, we're doing work, okay.
Yeah, the, it was there, we met last week, checking what day of the week it was, yeah. But, anyway, we, this was what we had proposed, that the celebration would be on Sunday, the 29th of August, which is the day before the town meeting, and we picked that because the first town meeting in 1921 was on that date. So it's a little bit significant, we can even, you know, reenact the election, because it's in the book, it's in the pamphlet that we put out. What we're looking to do is have, first thing in the morning, like eight o'clock, have a, a race, perhaps, adults and children, you know, separated.
Run it.
Will you say something?
I was wondering, you gonna run?
No, I'm not gonna run, too hot. And then things down to the, the new Richard E. Carter Park, whatever it's called, anyway, we're down, down there, and there would be food, and the kitchen group would take care of all of that, they'd sell it, obviously, hamburgers, hot dogs, whatever else they'd say corn would call, they would, they would take care of it, sell it, the money would come to them for, for that. Maybe a whoopee pie eating contest, we're gonna have a 50-50 raffle, these were some of the things that was done before, which is, which is in the anniversary book. There'd be t-shirts to sell, and then the people would go in the, the 5K or whatever, however we, you know, had the race, would get a t-shirt, just, you know, just for entering. We're hoping to have some different music groups, maybe each group play, play an hour, maybe have four of them, could be any kind of music, you know, maybe, or maybe not, you know, rap and real heavy metal, you know, we're 100 years old, we don't, we don't be there. I talked to the transportation museum, and they're really interested in it, weather permitting, they'll do a flyover, and they'll help us with, with some other things, and he said something about an antique car parade, perhaps, you know, either from here and then down through town and whatever, that car's your car, you know, and, and things like that. Couple of things we're gonna need to do would be, the area's gonna be mowed, and we thought it should be done like twice, maybe a couple of weeks before the event, and then again, just before the event, because people probably would be parking in that field. We're gonna ask the fire department to set up the tent, we have tables and chairs downstairs, and the tent, uh, we'll have to rent it, and there's, there's some, uh, options to rent in that tent, that hopefully won't cost us a whole bunch of money. There is $4,000 in that account, which was left over from the. There is $4,000 in that account, which was left over from the 75th, we moved it into the 100th. So that's sort of the, the overall, where we meet again tomorrow at 1:00, everybody has a different assignment. We're hoping the library, oh, there you are, hoping the library can do a display and maybe have some craft people there, you know?
Well, we offered this, we'd be open, we suggested that Muscle Ridge, if anyone could give us some district documents to put on display. And then, I know a lot of musicians, so we could have maybe a fun but simple musician in front of the library. And then, just so you know, Aaron Davis of Aaron Davis Science, he's new to Alice Hedy, who's on South Shore Drive. He has a stage and he has a band. I think it's a lot bigger than I have in front of him. So it's kind of saying, but we initially talked about a reopening celebration after COVID that we never got. Well, true, because we weren't sure when COVID was going to end. And that he'd be in front of the general store, we'd have something going at Carter Park. And then you have the library, you have a village kind of thing.
Because there's a music academy town, isn't there?
I was going to suggest because music academy is an option.
You do have the rest connected to be a chamber.
Right. I mean, we had like four groups or something playing for an hour each one, so there's music kind of going on.
Oh, we could have a musician at Carter Park and in front of the general store and at the library, so that's what we've talked. But anyways, we'll, we'll find out however we can.
Okay, yeah, and we're talking about some, some games for the kids because they've got to do something besides just hang around with this 100-year-old people or whatever. You know, the coin whole thing, the
Be a pawn.
Yeah.
Be a pawn?
What, what happens with the coins?
Oh, yeah, and, and the coins, we just got to figure out how many to order because we'll be selling those and perhaps whoever wins these races, that, that would be their prize, would be one of the coins. I think we, I don't know what the price of them was last year, I don't, I mean, last time, I don't think it's in here. But I think they cost like 10 bucks a soul piece, depending on what, what flavor they are.
They're more
Bronze or
Yeah, I, my memory serves me right, they're, they're, they're under 15. I believe some are 14 and some was
I remember 13.
13, yeah.
That we paid for them or we
That was his price.
We sold them for them.
No, we buy them.
We buy them, right. People have already put a thing in where they want these coins or whatever on Facebook. Carolyn Filbert kind of threw that out with her Muscle Ridge and then the Ash Point website and things like that. People are wanting to buy those.
If you're going to have a meeting, I'm just wondering if with regard to parking and everything, the transportation museum wants to help.
Right.
It'd be nice to, to run
Run a shuttle.
Kind of like a shuttle from the high, I mean, from the school or something. People could park in the parking lot there or here.
Right.
And then shuttle them down instead of having so many cars down.
Right, good idea, yeah. I mean, when I talked to John, I think it was today, you know, he very enthused about, about this stuff, so. So anyway, that's, that's what we've planned, you know, I, I, you know, we don't know what the weather's going to be, but unless any, you two have objections to the date?
No, 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 I think, I was thinking
Well, we're going to do one of the, a booklet too.
Why don't you consider, if you have it already, see if you can arrange a lobster boat parade.
Oh, we, that's all right, a boat parade, yeah, that's on there in, in the, like mid-afternoon because the tide is high, like four o'clock, so it's got to be within, you know, so they can get in. We thought maybe around the half and around the like hours or something like that.
Then they have to do it in your shop or do
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we're going to have a feet in tent, you know, so.
And then maybe a shop.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we can't change it, whatever it is, what it is, you know? We can't fit everybody in the arena, so it's, it's, and then, you know, this, last time the chairman of the board of selectmen opened it and invocation and, and all that. It's in the book. We're going to start selling some ads to pay for the book. That's, that's basically the
If I'm not mistaken, I think Carolyn Filbert said that she has a software that would actually print those.
She could probably, I wouldn't doubt it. But the big thing is to, is to get some ads and she had one of her daughter moms, I think, and working on, on some of that. It'd be easy to get ads. I mean, some of them are, you know, just little monoliners or whatever.
Yeah, people jump.
But we'll meet tomorrow at 1:00 here, if it doesn't stick, well, probably up here if there's no one here. If anybody's interested, this is my ideas, wants to do something.
Okay, thank you, it sounds great.
Yeah, hopefully, you know, we've got not quite two months, but we can pull it together, you know? Because we, we need to do something, it's been 100 years. It's pretty important.
Okay, we have Frank Ross and Stumpf up budget, and since Frank's not here and Bob has left, I guess we'll just scratch that one out.
Yeah, I wanted to speak to Bob too because he was talking about reserve or replacement because we're going to have to do the roof eventually. We have $27,000 set aside. It's not physically in a reserve account, it's in the, it's in the line, it's in the line. We set aside 20,000 one year, I can't remember what year it was now, into a capital asset fund and then two, three years later, we put in another 20,000 and we spent on something, I'm not sure, 12,000. So we've got $27,000 into that capital asset fund. So we can add to it because we voted back in 2002, I think it was, to see if the town will vote to put not more than 20,000 per year in the capital asset fund. We did that twice, so we had 40,000, spent some, so we're down to 27. It really should be put into an actual reserve account.
So it's not currently, so if we wanted to spend that, we would, we have to go before the town?
No, because it's already in the audit. If you look at the audit, it says capital reserve, not reserve, capital asset fund and there's $27,000 in there. So, you know, it should be put into, really, just make it, keep it easy, it should be put into an actual reserve.
We should be thinking about reserve accounts for fire trucks too.
I mean, we vote, so we can do
That one, tell you.
We've, you know, we voted.
I know, the ones that are not going to last much longer.
You know, we can, we can do this with a simple warrant article. We have to, obviously specify the amount and it's no more than 20,000, so we could put 15,000 away a year, you know? I don't know what a roof will cost, but we may have enough for that right now, but we still should put some more away.
If it's just singles, my house was seven thousand, eight thousand. But the, the, the work one, it does 13, I think so, so probably, probably 26 at least, I would guess.
Oh, I would think so, yeah. I, I, this is a big roof and plus we've got some daisies, so it's not just, you know, straight roof, so. So anyway, that's where that is. So anybody like to come to the meeting?
All right, we need some rich people to move into town to donate. Where's, where's MB and Ava?
They're ready. They did enough.
Any adjustments to agenda? Any other business? Any public comments?
We've had enough.
And we're just going to do the warrants and we thank you for attending.
You all wanted
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
I brought my lighter.
Thank you.
This tastes pretty good.
What is it? Alcohol? Do you want something with it, orange juice or something?
Just a bullet, just kidding.
All right.
Just kidding.
I don't want to do this, I'm doing.
You might want to get it out of the walkway.
Yeah.
Please, son.
I was reading the other day about when we almost had a president for Maine.
What? Oh, way, way back.
Yeah, if Lincoln had stuck with him instead of
Right. He probably would have been killed too. And this is the old one.
Yeah, I think that's him, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're looking at this, we'll need a toilet down there too.
And the, and the I'm serious.
Yeah, yeah.
We ordered six for the event on Friday night at, in Rockland.
Yeah.
And we almost didn't have it.
Wow, you'd think by that time, the end of the year.
Well, there's no inventory. That's, that's the problem right now. All of the businesses are
Oh, I see.
And everybody is rescheduling from a year ago, they're letting these celebrations and everything.
So you use an X now for your signature? An X on that one.
So isn't Earth Services, isn't that Frank?
Yes.
That's not my signature. Who did that?
I don't know. I didn't do it.
So the wood duck expense that he's listing, I'm not quite sure I understand that.
Well, look at the invoice. He usually goes down and, and pushes the piles back, like the burn piles. And sometimes he flips over the compost pile.
My eyes aren't finding, okay, but, all right, stop.
You might want to consider purchasing a backbone to do that work rather than provide some maybe some
Yeah, but it's not very often, it's not, it's not very often. There's other things they can do. Yes, but it's, it's not every day, every week thing.
Whether I'm in for the transfer station.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
This one's already signed. Is there another place we're supposed to sign?
Yeah, okay, compact. Both containers nearly full at whatever, what that is.
Oh, yeah, I found it.
Oh, the compost, the compost, I use that.
Justice Gordon needs to sign that one. And this one?
Yes, it's Everybody enjoy the fireworks?
I think so.
Running down here on the side.
All, all, all the, all the way to midnight.
Yeah, that was, I didn't see it, but huh.
All the way to midnight. That one's just Gordon.
Well, 4th of July, New Year's Eve, they can, they can, they can chew them off. Oh, I see why it's on that, because you weren't here, I guess.
Yeah.
He's still getting signed, yeah.
I think it's appropriate to exit.
Well, we need that. Yeah, 4th of July and New Year's Eve can go to 12:30 and the weekend before and the weekend after.
I'm sorry.
Fireworks.
The fireworks are illegal in town.
Well, we are in this town, yes, but I mean, normally.
What I was thinking is maybe we should hire a county police person for those days so that they can run around and ticket these people.
There'd be a lot of rolling around.
Yeah.
I would ask that whoever is Xing in my signature line, don't do that.
Right, I mean, you can still sign it.
Yeah, but I don't understand why it's
I don't either.
So do we have a motion?
Take a motion, we probably warrant that's presented.
Any discussion other than the Xs? All in favor? Passes three to all? I would entertain adjournment.
Come on, move. Everybody voted with their feet.
Yep, we are passes. Can I have those back to the folder?